I want to call to order the August fifteenth, I guess, October fifteenth, Seabrook City Council Meeting, please rise for the pledge.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor on the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay, public comments and announcements. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes, for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business, or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Steve Hutton, Steve? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hello, my name is Staley Hutton, I live at two five, or... Thank you, love, appreciate it. My name is Staley Hutton, I live at two five one nine Loganberry Circle, and I have resided at this address since 2004. I've had animals, I have dogs, and I am here to talk to you today about an ordinance that you guys have in place, animals at large. I had an above-ground hotwire fence in my yard from 2004 until 2019, where my dogs resided on their property. I also have a kennel with a doghouse that the dogs are, also can go into. When we are home, we like to let the dogs run among my property within my fence. Once, in 2019, I was exposed to a different kind of fence, because my electric fence, it's above-ground, animals run through it, it breaks, you gotta mow around it, it was not aesthetically pleasing, and it was a lot of hassle. So I did some research, I have somebody that lives in another state, he has an underground fence. Did some research, I went and looked at the underground fence, looked at the parameters, gone back and looked at your ordinance. Your ordinance says, "On the premises of the owner, any animal not confined to the premises of the owner by some physical means of sufficient height, strength, length, and/or a manner of construction to preclude the animal from leaving the premises of the owner." My dog does that. You did not, in this ordinance that y'all created, tell me what material I have to use. You didn't tell me how high the fence has to be, how strong it has to be, how long it has to be. You gave no specifications, other than it needs to keep the dog within the confines of my yard. I have done that since 2019. I have had three complaints on my dogs, and they've all been done but the dog catcher. He has come to my house, we have had multiple conversations, I had conversations with Dwayne, and I showed him, and I said, "I am in compliance with this. My dogs do not leave my yard." Yes, it's new technology, but I am in compliance, the way you guys have written this. I now have three tickets, I'm having to go to court, it's gonna cost me about a thousand dollars, and I'm just frustrated. It's an abuse of his power for him to decide how he wants to interpret this. I'm assuming that your intent of this ordinance was to keep people safe within their neighborhoods, and for not to have dogs running amok in the neighborhood. And my dogs don't do that, and it frustrates me that this is where I'm at today. I have had to take off work, I've spent lots of time and effort, the fence itself was expensive, I had to pay to put it in, I had to train my dogs, and I've done that. I have videos, the dogs never, have never left my yard, never. You can ask anybody in my neighborhood, you can ask the dog catcher. The tickets that he gave me are three pictures of my dogs in my yard. So I need some clarification on this ordinance. You guys have made your new technology, now you want dogs chipped? That's new technology, and that's great. Wasn't a big fan of it, but that's what you asked me to do, that's what I did. And I feel like an underground fence is a manner to preclude my animals from leaving. Traditional fences, dogs crawl under, jump over, chew through, my dogs don't do that. And so I am hoping that today, you guys can go back and revisit this, and make this up to times. We're in a new world. You're wanting us to use tags for our dogs? Let us use the technology for our fences as well. He asked me to put a sign up, I've done that, and he still wrote me tickets. He's written me three, two sets were missed because of a police chief conversation that I had, but the last one I'm still gonna have to go to court for. So I hope that today, I've brought to light something that needs to be addressed, because it's unfair. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Patricia Jones?
Hi, my name is Patricia Jones, I'm also at twenty-five nineteen Loganberry Circle, I'm Staley's cousin, I've recently sold my house, and I live there part-time. In the midst of preparing to retire, I am the reason that she got the last set of tickets, because I'm the one that had the dogs out, I was sick at home that day, and I let the dogs out, let them run in the yard before I went and picked them up. What concerns me is, she's been in the yard before, when she's been issued a ticket. He hasn't even talked to her, she was mowing the yard, the dogs were running in the yard with her, because it's fun, she's out there, she's supervising them. We're never, we don't leave the dogs out in the yard with the underground fence when we're not at home. It's always when we're home, they stay in a ten-by-twenty kennel, or they stay in the house, they are very well cared for, they're up on their shots. And I think we're doing everything that homeowners are supposed to do, and I'm trying to figure out, what's the spirit behind your ordinance? If the spirit of the ordinance is, you wanna make sure the dogs are not off the property, they're not, as evidenced by the fact that he keeps taking pictures of the dogs on the property. Even the district attorney, when she met with him, said, "Are these your dogs, running loose?" And she said, "Yes." "Where is this picture taken?" "On my property." "In your yard?" "Yes, sir, in my yard." And he didn't understand it, and had to go for clarification. He can pull outside of our driveway, and stand there, and take pictures of the dogs. He's a stranger, the dogs bark, they run, they're happy, they're right there at the border of the yard, they don't leave, we've taken video, he's seen them in action. And guys, it brings up another point that some of our neighbors have brought up, they have no problem with it, we've surveyed, we've posted on the Circle website, Loganberry Circle Facebook page, no one has a problem, no one's ever filed a complaint about these dogs. And she's been, she's had them out there for years. They walk their dogs by our yard, our dogs run up and down the yard and greet everybody, they never leave the yard. They're safe, there have been no attacks, we have homeowners' insurance, but there's been no problems. And so it seems like a waste of taxpayer money to be paying someone to make multiple trips through our neighborhood, to continue to photograph and ticket animals that are not doing anything. And if they were that much of a danger, then my question is, why isn't he entering our property and taking the dogs and impounding them? It doesn't make a lot of sense. You're also setting this up for anybody who, some of our neighbors have expressed concerns, they have a fenced yard, they open the gate to their yard, they walk out to get their mail while their dog, that is not used to being walked on a leash to go poo or pee and take care of business, and their dog is running around supervised in their yard, oh, but that fence is open, so I guess that's not a fenced yard and completely enclosed right now, so is he gonna run by and give them tickets for that? It seems a little overboard, and I don't think it's what the intent of the ordinance is, and we would certainly like some clarification from you guys, and again, to maybe make some amendments and address it, because I think she's done the best fence, I mean, even the neighbors come by and say, "What are y'all doing to keep your dogs in your yard?" Because our dogs are digging out, they're crawling over, no matter what we do. Why are we being asked to do something different when we've got something that is 100% effective? We've never, in all the years that she's had it, we're now on year five, never had a dog escape. That's all, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Thanks. 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about city-community events.
Well, good evening. Harvest Moon Regatta is coming up this Thursday, October seventeenth through Sunday, the twentieth. It says Lakewood Yacht Club, but the starting line is down in Galveston, that's a great big yacht race, always fun to watch them take off. Bike Around the Bay is Sunday, October twentieth, from eight to two. National Drug Takeback Day, primarily for prescription drugs that have expired and that sort of thing. That is Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from ten to two, at Seabrook PD. The Paul Parade, a costume Paul Parade, is at Mater Park on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at ten. And Joe Nichols will be at Bar 295 on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from five to ten p.m. Is there anything I've missed?
The only other thing is, on Monday, November eleventh, at eleven a.m., the Veterans Day at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial, that ceremony will be at eleven a.m.
Anybody else? Thank you. 2.0 Presentations. 2.1, Presentation of an Update Regarding the Seabrook Trap New to Return Pilot Program. Chief?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Just a quick update, we just passed our six-month mark for the pilot program that you all approved for the Trap New to Return Program. The volunteers, they've worked well with us throughout the program, they've accomplished most of the stated goals that we went into this trying to accomplish. They've cataloged over fifty animals, fifty stray cats in that small little area that we agreed to, they've spayed eleven, and they've rehomed twelve. Over the course of that six months, we didn't have any instances of nuisance animal calls in that area, and we also only had to put down one animal, and that was agreed upon by the volunteers and everyone. So I think the goal that we were trying to achieve when we went into this endeavor, we got there and they got there. I would like to ask for Monica Milliken to come up, just to say a couple of words.
Monica Milliken, League City Pets Alive. The chief said that I should come up here and tell you that we would like to continue this program. We feel like it's been successful, we feel like it's worked well, it's accomplished the goals of the nuisance calls, the lack of euthanasia. So, you know, we would like to see it be continued indefinitely, and hope that's what y'all agree to this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Is there any other areas that we should look at? I mean, if we've met the goals that we set forth over there on the point, is there any other locations that may, this may help?
I think that the only location that I've heard identified that's consistently a problem is the entire point, not just the small area that we gave them, because the area that we gave them was very restricted.
Okay. Okay.
If you recall, when it was started, it was only to be on city-owned property. So it was just a strip of land, and we were prohibited from working with any of the property owners. And we understood, and like I've said to the chief, we stayed in our lane, we did what we were supposed to do. So our hope is that we can expand the area by talking to the property owners, and we've had several, two property owners that have approached us, and we've actually helped with their animals, but they approached us, and we helped. So we would like to be able to talk to the, put out a notice, if somebody doesn't want us helping them, the chief will just stay away, but if they want us to help, we will get written permission from them to be able to help with their animals. Because if someone told me that they were having a complaint, that he had heard about complaints, where people were just dumping food under one of the businesses, and I said, "But that's not us, I promise, that's your rogue feeders that are doing that, not us." We have stayed in our lane and done what we committed to do, now we'd like to be able to show you what more we can do if we can expand our area where we work with the cats.
You think there would be any issue with that, Chief?
Based on our experience, there hasn't been an issue as of yet that Monica and I haven't been able to work out. She's, we've worked really well together, we have had a couple of little stumbling points, but they've been easily rectified.
So who, we would put the notice out, would you put the notice out? How would we contact the business owners, or do we need to wait for them to contact them? How would that happen?
I'd have to create a policy on that, so that, but the framework, we would establish the framework, but the volunteers would do the work. So they would go out, but then the business owners would be able to contact them, they would be able to contact the business owners, and I would just require them, and that would be in that policy, that if you do that, then you're going, once they tell you no, they're gonna have to proactively reach out to you, because we don't wanna, you know, constantly bombard our businesses with, "Hey, can we do it now? Can we do it now?"
It's a great program, and I hope that we can move forward. So I hope we can get the property owners to agree, and reach out to you guys, and...
Is there just a, something we can do to put a flyer in, there's not that many businesses down there, put a flyer in there, and they can contact someone?
Absolutely, yes, we can do that.
And let them start to contact, start to...
Yes, sir.
All right, would that be okay, Monica?
Yeah, we're happy to contact them, the chief just mentioned that he would send a letter to make sure that if anybody didn't want us there, they would tell him, "We don't want them there," and then we would abide by that. So we don't care whether he sends a letter...
I would assume that if they didn't contact you off of a flyer, then they probably don't...
Yeah, we're happy to contact them.
Okay, no, that's fine, we're good, okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Kevin?
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to the events that were mentioned, there is one that will take place before your next council meeting, that's gonna be on Saturday, November second, registration's at nine thirty, this is for our annual Fall Sweep event, we go out and collect garbage along the coastlines before it enters the waterway, and we get credit for that for Keep America Beautiful.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. What date was that? I'm sorry. November second?
Saturday, November second, registration's at nine thirty, the event's from ten to twelve.
Thank you. 3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the May first, 2018, August thirteenth, 2018, and October first, 2024, city council meetings.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? I guess. 4.0, boards and commissions. 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the reappointment of Nathan Lenna, Mercy Friday, and Liliana Gonzalez to the Ethics Review Commission for a term to expire in October 2025.
Make a motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. 4.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the appointment of two members and two alternate members to the Ethics Review Commission, with terms of the members and one alternate member to expire in October 2026, and one alternate member to expire in October 2025.
So the committee met, me and Buddy, not the committee, but we met, did the interviews, went well, we enjoyed everybody that came out and interviewed, and thank you for coming out, but there's only four positions that we're appointing right now, and so the ones that we've selected, as you guys have the applicants in there as well, but we would like to say Mark Warfel, Kelly Bowman, Nancy Harwell, and Helen Hanks as the four. The first two, Mark and Kelly, would be the primary right now, and then the two alternates would be Helly and Nancy.
Were these members that were already on it?
Sorry?
Were these, were these members already on ethics? Or are these new members?
No, these are new members, these are new members.
And so all four, these, were there more than those that applied?
I'm sorry?
Were there more than just the four?
Yeah, there was, what, two more, or one more, one more that applied.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead, motion?
Move to approve as recommended by Mike J. Rosser.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 5.1, old business. 5.1, review, consider, and take all appropriate action on specific objections to the proposed agreement between the Seabrook American Flag Initiative Agreement in the city of Seabrook, and any potential modifications to address concerns. Buddy?
Okay, in our last meeting, I asked about this because of all the activity that is currently going on Main Street, and it is being proposed for Main Street so that we don't have a conflict of interest, or people, you know, running into each other. And at that time, Mr. McCall pointed out that he had not... And at that time, uh, Mr. McCall pointed out that he had not signed the agreement, uh, with the city due to the fact it was thirty-two pages long and it had a caveat in there that said that if the city damaged anything, that, uh, Saffa, uh, would be responsible for it. And I, I was just hoping that we could come to some sort of agreement on, one, it's not thirty-two pages. I read it. Uh, yes, Steve Weathered wrote it and he's a bit wordy, uh, but the section in there regarding, uh, if the city damages it and the Saffa or Seabrook, uh, American Flag Initiative would have to pay for it, I think we can modify that, um, so that it wouldn't be a stumbling block. Because I know that all members of council voted for this, you know, to get it going. So... Joe, would that be agreeable to you?
Yeah, I, I can sit down with Gail and the attorney and come up with something that's very reasonable because, again, like I said, it's, the city puts in the receivers in the ground, the two feet or whatever, and all I'm gonna be doing is putting the flag in with volunteers and then removing the flags when the two weeks is up and then storing them. So, nothing's going to happen, but at the same time, I understand the city's gotta protect itself, but it's putting a flag in, in a receiver and then pulling it out. So, obviously, it didn't need thirty-two pages, but anyway, the point is, I'm sure we can come up with something. I can sit down with Gail and the attorney. We can come up with something that can be signed and we can get this thing going because I think it would look really good, so...
What's thirty-two pages? Is it thirty-two pages?
No. It's like, you've got three maps, four pages.
Okay. So, is that, so you wanna sit down with the attorney and, yeah, okay. So, anybody have any more, anything else to say on that? We'll just let that happen. Appreciate it. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Buddy. Lost my place. Yeah, six point one, new business. Six point one, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, Master Fee Schedule Update. An ordinance amending the code of the City of Seabrook to update Appendix B entitled Master Fee Schedule by updating and amending parks and recreation fees, animal control and cell, shelter fees, and utility fees, making findings of fact, repealing, uh, repealing and replacing all references to such fees and charges in all ordinances or resolutions in conflict with this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for notice and effective date. What do you got, Rachel?
I think Gail's put it up on the screen for you. So, it looks like there is a microchip fee has been added. Uh, there were, uh, some utility adjustments, I believe, and there is reduction for the pine gully fees. And Gail, am I missing anything else? I think there were only a few changes.
So, the...
Oh, the special event application fee, that was at the request of, uh... PD, correct? Yeah, some late fees and things that just needed to be stated.
So, the fees for chipping dropped? From ten to five and from twenty to ten? Am I reading that right?
The chip's always been twenty, ten.
Okay.
Move to approve six point one.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Keep losing this stuff. Six point two, consider and take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, Revision to Personnel Policies, Chapter Eight, Section Five, Electronic Communications. An ordinance of the City of Seabrook amending the City of Seabrook Personnel Policies, Chapter Eight, Employee Communications, Section Five, Electronic Communications, by adding to this section prohibited technologies and making various findings and provisions related to the subject. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Prove six point two.
Second.
Second.
This is about TikTok, right?
This is TikTok?
Yeah. Okay.
It's TikTok and clarification of some outdated language, but I didn't see anything significant and we don't have any choice of the TikTok thing after what came out of Austin, if I'm correct.
That's correct. So, the end of November, it's a deadline for municipalities to adopt some policy that's restrictive of that. Jimmy, um, is making his way up here, so he was instrumental in putting the amendment together, so I'll let him, if there's any additions, but it is, in short, the TikTok amendment.
Good evening. This is all due to, uh, Texas legislation passing SB eighteen ninety-three where TikTok is banned on all government devices, cell phones, networks. Um, we have to have a policy in place by November twentieth due, from this ordinance, so this is the start of it.
And that's, this is just on city-owned devices?
City-owned devices, anything that attaches to the, uh, city network, whether it's your personal cellphone or not, uh, TikTok will be banned.
Do I hear a motion? Well, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Six point three, consider and take all appropriate action on the recommendation from the Open Space and Trails Committee to direct staff to plan and organize a groundbreaking ceremony in November for the East Track of Correthers Coastal Garden improvements as approved at the October third, twenty twenty-four OST meeting. Monica?
Hi. There we go. Okay. Um, so this is similar to a request we've had in the past when we opened the Berm Trail, um, about two years ago. Um, we just think it would be appropriate as a committee to, um, all the people who have put hard work and time into making these plans for the park, um, to have some kind of groundbreaking ceremony. At the moment, we don't have specific plan in place, but we do know that once the bid is done and awarded, it'll be sometime in November, we would probably ask to plan it, um, around that time after the bid is awarded and we would work with staff, similar to what we've done in the past. So, we just, um, were advised to request, you know, that council is on board with that and that we can proceed once that, that bid is awarded.
Move to approve six point three.
Rob?
Move to approve six point three.
Second. Discussion?
Absolutely, second. The, uh, the, the comment is, uh, direct staff to planning, organize, and what you said is you would coordinate with staff, but it'd kinda be a joint venture?
I think so, yes. Um, I know in the past, we had one member, John, worked with staff before, so I don't, he could maybe address more to that, but yeah, it wouldn't be like a direction.
I don't wanna dump the whole burden of it on you or city staff.
Absolutely.
Sharing that burden, I think it's a great idea. Let's move forward.
And obviously, you know, we think it's appropriate that we have some kind of ceremony, not ceremony, but, you know, event to say, "This is done. We're ready." So, yeah.
Do we have, uh, like a budget line item that we can give them or are they gonna, is it gonna be donated? How can we help in any way?
Um, I think once we get some plans in place, I can't imagine, we've got the shovels and hard hats, which...
And giant scissors.
Yeah, so...
That's about it.
Okay, well, just let us know what you need.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, there is a mention of the Blue Angels, but they're not available.
Okay. Any, anything else? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point four, consider and take all appropriate action on the recommendation from the Open Space and Trails Committee to plant trees near the intersection of Red Bluff and Lakeside as approved at the August first, twenty twenty-four OST meeting.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry. Make a motion to approve six point four.
Second.
We didn't vote yet, John. Discussion?
We didn't vote. We still want you to talk. Tell us what you're gonna do. I know.
We love free trees.
I have a question. On the planting of the trees, are you coordinating, is this it within the right-of-way?
There's a lot of right-aways. There's the county...
Right. So, you're coordinating this with your, the appropriate authority, is Betmax, et cetera, and all?
Yeah. Tree, we've partnered tree plantings with Trees for Houston for thirteen years now. They're doing a, a project with the county. This is on county land. They're doing a project with the county right up here on Bay Area by the, is it called Bay Area Park? And so, they're gonna help us out, um, work with Center Point, uh, make sure that we adhere to the proper planning. Adrian wants the trees all planted in a row so it's easy on his mowers. Uh, we gotta take species selection into account so that, uh, the trees don't get up into the Center Point lines. We're gonna have to be twenty feet off the power lines, so we're not gonna be quite as close to the sidewalk as we wanted, but hopefully someday soon, two or three years, they can start providing some shade for that trail.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I heard the county's starting to call you Johnny Oak Tree.
I have no comment.
Where, you, are the trees donated, John?
Yeah, trees of Houston are gonna, it's gonna be, uh, they're calling it a private planting. They're gonna give us twenty, fifteen-gallon trees. Those are about six, eight feet tall.
Great.
So, nothing too big, but not the little dinky guys either.
That's great.
And they're gonna water them, too.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Six point, oh, six point five, consider and take all appropriate action on the continuation of the Seabrook Trap New to Return Project at Seab, at, uh, Seabro, at the point. Motion?
Make a motion to approve six point five?
Second.
Any more discussion?
The, the only thing I would suggest is that another, it was recommended to be indefinite. Indefinite has a lot of sins go with it. I would say that we renew it for a specific period and keep going just to make sure that everything is going well.
Is that an amended motion?
Well, I, I like the indefinite. Here's, here's why. I, when talking to these ladies, they said that, 'cause I said, "Okay, what's the deal with the cats over there?" Well, it's a permanent food source. It's never gonna go away, so this is always gonna be the issue. But I hear what you're saying, Buddy. Jim, that, but, so you put this caveat in is every year, get a report, which is kinda the same thing, but I like the indefinite part because these ladies one day will hand it down to someone else someday and those people can continue it, but at the same time, 'cause I was like, "Well, why are there, you know, why are there so many cats in this area?" Well, it's a food source, so it's never gonna change unless all the food, all the seafood markets go away. We don't want that to happen. So, the cats are gonna be there forever. Let's just do this and then once a year, and we'll, let them pick the date, like, you know, every spring or summer or whatever, you know, we'll discuss this, 'cause it'll be different council and they can look at and see how well the program's working. The other thing is, thank you very much, obviously, this ended up working out great, you guys working with the chief, so that's a great thing, you know? 'Cause people were skeptical at first, like, "Oh, what's this gonna be like?" But it obviously worked, so that's a great thing, so keep it up.
What, what do we, we decide that we will continue the program based on a, uh, annual renewal?
Correct. That's a, that's a great way of saying it.
Amended. So amended.
And Mayor and Council, we'll come back with a resolution that, uh, working with chief and put this in a policy format, but it'll be adopted by resolution. We just wanted to get some direction tonight that you do wanna continue the program.
We don't need to amend that motion.
Okay, perfect.
Also, I'd like to, um, let us consider, um, letting the chief work up a, a sheet to, or a form, or a letter to, just to offer, you know, some communication with, um, the TNR program, people with the businesses, if they are interested in, um, it sounds like they're restricted right now, so...
Okay. Better right, chief?
Yes, we'll get that all worked out.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
There was a motion to continue it, so, in a second.
Make a motion to continue? Do we have it?
We already have the motion.
All in favor?
Yeah, do y'all wanna withdraw the motion at this point?
I think we ought to withdraw the motion until, until Gail comes up with the resolution.
Motion to continue? Motion to continue? And then we'll, we'll approve our actual resolution at later date, so you can go ahead and vote. That way, we know that was the direction you want.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue?
We already have it.
We already have the motion.
All in favor? Do we have to vote on it? Okay, all right. Thank you. Six point six, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Seabrook and Harris County Public Health for participation in wastewater-based epidemiology program and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. All right.
Uh, we were approached by Harris County Public Health. Uh, they wanna put a, an auto sampler at our influence to our new wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they would collect samples twice a week, uh, send it off to a lab, check it for viruses. Uh, the key of the program, the point of the program is to detect early viral infections within the community and then let local area hospitals know, you know, start preparing. Uh, no charge to us. It's a free program. Uh, data, we can, we can see the data. They'll be free to us.
You're gonna take the samples?
I'm not taking samples.
So, you, I had a couple of questions, just, this is the same, this is the water that goes to our bay?
No, this, this is before that.
This is just inside?
This, this is the water before it goes into the plant to be treated. This is the, this is not, this is the, this is the bay.
So, this is before?
Before it gets treated.
That should be lovely.
Yeah.
So, um, it says only viruses and related, but it's not, not prescription drugs, not other things, nothing else?
Not to this time, no.
Come out of that?
I think there's a part of the program you could, the city could pay extra if they wanted to do samples on their own, but as a part of the Harris County-funded program, they're just doing viruses.
Do we feel like that we are robust enough on the other side of the water that goes into the bay?
Oh, no. We, uh, we're already treating for, or we're already, uh, sampling for bacteria. Yeah. We can have no bacteria going into the, to the bay. Chlorine is chlorinated, dechlorinated, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we hear a motion?
Move to approve six point six.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point one, discussion regarding the reestablishment of the Hotel Tax Advisory Committee. Jackie?
I brought this up last, um, meeting, um, because it, it does seem kind of a difficult process for council to, um, approve this and, and know all the details of who's, uh, a candidate for these funds. So, I know we've had a, a committee in the past. It's been probably a few decades, different people, different times. I think we should try to, try this again. What are your thoughts?
I think it's an excellent idea. I hope that you'll leave this, bring it back to us because it is confusing and I don't know how we're gonna ever put our, our, the information on heads and beds until we come up with some ideas on how to do that and what the parameters are, so I, I support it.
Thank you.
Definitely. I mean, we, we've done it before. Um, I, I don't mind doing it again. Um, I think we just need to have a couple of hoteliers on there and that can attend because, again, this goes back to their money, so we wanna make sure that their, uh, voice is heard. That's the biggest point that I, I wanna make sure, so whether it's Ruchi or David or somebody, whoever, is, and they're willing to, I think, do that. So, um, as long as we have that and we just gotta figure out the details on it and see. Um, and then obviously, marketing, whether it's Lexi or Amanda, um, somebody on there And then obviously, marketing, whether it's Lexi or Amanda, somebody on there. And then I think in the past, we had two council members, if I wasn't mistaken, or one, I can't remember.
Well, I would nominate you to be at least the liaison to vet out these committee members.
Really?
Since if you, if you can't serve, but the liaison.
Then not me!
Calm down, calm down.
No, I don't. I, I, I'll do whatever I can to help. Absolutely. I don't have a problem with that.
Great, because you're the expert. That'd be great.
Just let us know.
Yeah, I agree with it. And I'd like to have it set up to where the committee could get input, not necessarily physically be in the meeting, but to put in our ideas so that they be considered by the committee.
Yeah.
Because it is, it is something that just a long time needed to be addressed.
We could definitely do it again. I'm for it.
I, I think it's a good idea, and it's appropriate time to do it. A question I have is the remit of the committee. Would it be the process and procedures, how decisions are made? Or would it be an annual committee that decides how the money is allocated?
I was thinking it would meet, kind of like the current committees do, you know, once a month, and they powwow and figure out what businesses are interested in this and what businesses could be candidates.
I think it'd be very good, too, to set criteria and establish these are the things that must be met so that we don't wind up favoring one end of the, the community and, and not another, so that everybody has an equal shot and equal benefit.
Well, I think we've had this already, we've had this committee in place before, so maybe we can go back and look at some of the language on how it was set up originally and then kind of go from there, if that gives you enough direction to, to form this.
Yeah, looking back at those documents, probably just need direction if we want them just to focus on hot sponsorship applications or branch out into any of the, the hot budget past the sponsorships.
Do you know what they did in the past?
They did branch out a little bit past just the sponsorships and did make other recommendations to council for hot expenditures, so.
I mean, I'd be open for that. What do y'all think? Kind of, I think maybe just set it up kind of, kind of how it was before, and then we can reprove it or tweak it if we need to at the next meeting.
It is an advisory committee. It's still coming back to council for final approval of all expenditures. So, yeah, as long as council's still left in the loop.
Right. They'll make their recommendations and break.
Okay.
But they'll have more time to go through it, like, than, than we, us.
All right. So, who wants to get that started? Since Jackie brought it up.
Can I make the motion if I brought it up?
It's, it's not an action item.
Oh, okay.
Not an action item. There's no motion. But somebody needs to get it started. Gail's gonna look up some past, past.
Ordinances or, yeah.
Rules and regulations. Okay, all right. Well, can we bring that up? Probably at the first December meeting? Thank you. 8.0, executive session. 8.1, conduct a closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.07, liberation regarding economic development negotiations, and 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding legal matters pertaining to the industrial district agreement with the Port of Houston. We are adjourned at 6:44. Yeah.
Council has returned from executive session. No action was taken. It is 7:57. 9.0, open session. Council, 10.0, routine business. 10.1, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, state highway 146 recap, and city of Seabrook CIP projects.
All right, Mayor and council, a quick update on a few of our projects. On boards and commissions, Plankton and Zoe did not have their last regular meeting. However, if you'll see with some of the newspaper articles that I send you guys, we've got the public hearings that are coming up. So there'll be a revision to the definition section for smoke and head shop, vape shop, and CBD sales. The intent of that one is Sean's going to take the P and Z through a bit of an exercise of trying to clarify. A lot of those have been getting several calls for different strip centers, and so we need a better definition for which each one of those are. Public hearing to revise and add mobile vending as well as mobile food vendor. So we've had some local old Seabrook businesses come looking for added opportunities to do some of these mobile vendings on the weekends in the old Seabrook district. So he's going to take them through some definitions of what that might look like. Open space and trails, the two council recommendations for the live oaks, you've already heard, and then there was this general proper, or reports on theirs. 146, they are getting very close to the end. They had projected the end of November, and that is looking very close on final cleanup. Got some pavers, detention ponds on the north that they're working on, punch list items, and they're working on their camp removal at Red Bluff in 146. The 146 project at Red Bluff Dispenser is continuing to be in progress. There was quite a few lane closures this week, last weekend, and we continue to push those out when we get them from that project lead for the lane construction on the southbound and northbound on the overpass. The next one is on the 19th for the southbound closure. That'll be more towards the shore acres area, but we'll probably have some minimal impacts here. What's next? They're working on that MSE wall on the entrance and the exit ramp reconfiguration will happen just to the north of the Red Bluff overpass in the next phase. We're continuing to work with TechStot on another project. I don't have a lot of new information on this, but we are still working with them on doing what they call an access management study. And they've bid a contractor, and they're still working on what that contract would look like to get back with me to figure out when we could potentially kick this project off. This is, as we've mentioned before, just the first step in many, but it would study NASA Road One within the city of Seabrook limits to determine placement and possible safety improvements with adding medians along NASA Parkway. Again, that study would be a year once that is kicking off. Our CIP projects for Pine Gully wastewater, they're very, very close. We've got some components down at the existing main street facility that's bypassing some things. That's the last bit that's going into the old plant. Once that's cut off and then reconnected successfully to the forced main, we'll be at 100%. So we are almost there. They're coordinating the final acceptance, so we're hoping within the next couple of months to be fully complete. Port Rail Spur, progress meetings have started back hoping within the next couple of months to be fully complete. Port Rail spur, progress meetings have started back up. Again, we're anticipating the rail to be potentially live at the early of 2025. They walked us through the backup. So you've seen a number of little metal boxes going up on the safety arms there. Those are their backup and power supplies. Their safety devices have been installed. Mike, I think you had asked previously about the asphalt grade. So all the callers on the update meeting have been communicating to that team that they need to get that northbound furniture road elevated and leveled out. They are going to work on that, but did not, still did not give us a firm date on that. Water projects, closed out or just about closed out Red Oak Gakers water line. Old 146 interconnect is now ready for bid. The Geon to Red Bluff, which is the line that's going to connect and give us another piece in our loop, is still pending. We're trying to coordinate with all the construction that's going on over there and then connect with Pasadena TechDOT and the project manager. Seascape water lines are about 60% complete in design. On wastewater, the lift station, five Forest Main improvements are still in design, and we've had a recent conversation on the wastewater treatment plant at Main Street and the demolition. So we are opting to still coordinate with additional architect to come down and help us look at the existing structures, what can stay, how we're going to dress up that lift station, and then bring those two back to city council or EDC if there's significant funding in, which I'm sure there will be. Pine Gully Lift Station, Forest Main is another project that's still in design. We've gone through all of these grants in the past, but just still working away on our ARPA. With our HMGP, you've approved two of the generators, and we're pending two more approvals that are in the system. So we will, looks like successfully get all four of those generators. Any questions?
Okay, I got a few things. I've talked about this before, but I drove on Main Street and NASA One, and there's 65 of the decorative lights that are out. So it's the ones that, you know, they're designed to look like the old gas lamps. So there's 65 all the way up until El Lago. So that's a bunch. But, and then the other thing, and this is a good thing, I talked to Gail, I guess it was last week, and I said, hey, the gazebo over on Main Street has got a little plaque on it that says a church did it in 2018. I guess they refurbished it or painted it up or whatever. And it was looking kind of tattered now. And so I said, like, who does that? Is the church going to do it, or are we going to do it? Well, I went by it today. Our guys were out there, and they cut down all the vines. The vines were growing up so much on it, you couldn't even sit on one of the benches. Well, they, not only did they cut the vines down, which made it look 10 times better, by the way, it looks fantastic. They were pressure washing it, and then they're going to paint it. And then there was a couple nails that were, had popped out, and people could trip on that. They're fixing those. And then someone, I guess, has wrapped some stuff, and then they stapled into it. So he's pulling all the staples out. So big kudos to Juan and the other guys that were out there. The gazebo looks fantastic already. It's not even painted yet. So it looks really, really good and much appreciated on that. But I understand that maybe it's not our, on the, on the lights, but if there's that many, then TechDOT, or, I mean, not TechDOT, Center Point should be doing something because they go out really quick. Like, you know, like, you know, if it only lasts a week or two, what's the, you know, they're going to either put LED or do something because 65 is a lot. So anyway.
Over the last several months, we've had a number of people address city council, and it was, one of the topics bringing up was that the city and administration was creating problems for businesses to locate here, and because the city administration, there were businesses leaving. I reached out to two of the people that talked that are connected to commercial real estate and invited them to speak, make a presentation to EDC. One never responded to my invitation. The other responded, said that he would be there, but was a no-show. And I just wanted to bring that out. If you know of anyone that does have this knowledge of the problems with the city, please let me know because I'll be happy to put them on the EDC agenda so they can give us specifics as to how we can improve.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a quick comment, Gil. On the west side of the freeway there, we have that new sidewalk, right, that's there. Well, I've seen a lot of people running over the weekend on that, and the vegetation is grown so high. If we can see if they can cut that back because people are starting to use the sidewalk now. And, right, it just looks bad. And...
Where are you talking?
Where the freeway is here on this, on the west side, there's a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
It's rich for, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Vegetation, you can't move all around for that. And they will run and try to lose it.
Right.
And safety hazard, something to jump out of while they're running, anything like that. So just, just a comment.
Or they have to run into the road to avoid the grass.
Yeah. Well, it's far enough back. They wouldn't do that.
That's true.
Anyone else?
I would just, can I make a, because I was about to say a date. Can I suggest that we move, cancel, or postpone the November 5th meeting?
That's on the next agenda.
It's next.
Next item.
Oopsie.
10.2. Establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next regular meeting is scheduled for November 5th at 6:00 PM. Again, we would like to request that a workshop session take place at 5:00 PM prior to that meeting.
Okay, I texted or emailed you back saying, I didn't realize that was Election Day, so I'm not going to be there. But just, you know, I'm not, I just want to meet, like, let's do it on Monday or Wednesday. All I'm saying is move it one of the two days, but not on Election Day.
I agree.
Or skip it altogether.
That's what I was trying to get to. Move, postpone, cancel.
Well, we, but then there would be only two more because we don't have a second one in December.
Thank you.
We're running out of dates. It would be my, I cannot meet on either Monday or Wednesdays. But Thursday would be okay if we can schedule it when P&Z or EDC isn't in this room because now they tape these. So we only have one room to share. Otherwise, we got to tape them. So...
That Thursday works for me.
Me too.
I moved to change the November 5th meeting to November the 7th.
Second.
All in favor?
I guess we can do that.
I guess.
Okay.
And we'll still start early that day at 5:00?
Yeah, we'd have to start at 5:00.
And that would be, so that works.
The 7th.
The 7th. Motion to adjourn.
Well, wait, we, let's talk about, let's talk about December now. Are we still going to, if we have a meeting on the 5th, was it, Rachel?
So the December meeting, the first meeting is on the 3rd. The second meeting was the one that I think...
Cancel that, like, do.
We typically cancel that.
For my birthday?
Holidays.
Just kidding. My birthday's the 16th. That sounds good to me.
When's the tree lighting?
Yeah, the tree lighting is always on the council meeting night, too.
Exactly.
And November 19th is your second meeting in November, too. So I don't know if you guys...
I think that, I think the second meeting in December.
Well, in November.
Oh, November.
November is the 19th and then the 17th, I believe.
When's Thanksgiving? Thanksgiving is late.
The 28th, I believe.
Yeah, it's the following week.
Yeah, okay, so we can have, we can have...
And the tree lighting's on Thursday, the 5th.
The 5th?
Yeah, so we, that'll work.
No.
So we're canceling this, the 17th?
Yes, we can, we can have two in November and the first one in December.
No, just one in December.
And then we'll cancel the second one in December.
Take the second one out in December. That's what we always do.
I'm confused. That's all right. I'll get caught up. I know I got to be here on the 7th of November.
Perfect. All right. We'll let you know the rest of the year at that point.
Okay.
All right.
Rachel, could we get a reminder that we're not coming in on that? So no one shows up like that's happened before?
Absolutely. I will text you all to remind you of the...
Rachel, I have an agenda item I'd like on our next meeting. I'd like a report from animal control on the underground fences.
That's a good idea. I like that.
Great idea.
Sounded like her fence works really well.
All right, let's, all right, let's not discuss it. All right, want to make it again?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned at 8:00.